Okay, um, seeing that everyone's here. I will hereby call today's meeting, which is a regular session, immediately followed by a committee of the whole. Um, this is Wednesday, October sixth, twenty twenty-one. And with a clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Rallo.
Here.
Bollin.
Here.
Rosenbarger.
Here.
Scamblerie.
Here.
Sims.
Here.
Flaherty.
Here.
Piedmont Smith.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Sandberg.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, we'll do the agenda summation. Um, we'll start with approval of minutes, but there aren't this evening. Then we'll move to reports. Um, a maximum of twenty minutes to set aside for each part of this section. Uh, we'll go to council member reports, if any. Then we'll have a report underneath the mayor and city offices. Uh, B, which would be Economic Development Care Act Grant Update. Then we'll move down to report from council committees, if any. And lastly, we'll have comments from the public. Then we'll move to appointments to boards and commissions. Following that, we have legislation for second readings and resolutions. We have ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-four to amend Title II of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Administration and Personnel Regarding Amending Bloomington Municipal Code two dot oh four dot four two oh, Motion to Adjourn or Recess to Place Greater Limits on the Duration of Council Meetings That They May End at a Reasonable Hour. Then we'll move down to resolution twenty-one dash thirty-five. This resolution proposing an ordinance modifying local income tax allocations in Monroe County and casting fifty-eight point two eight votes in favor of the ordinance regarding adjusting the allocations between the Public Safety Entering Point, PSAP, and general public safety purposes tax rates without changing other allocations over the total expenditure tax rate. Then we have legislation for first readings. The ordinance twenty-one dash forty to amend Title Six Health and Sanitation to the Bloomington Municipal Code regarding removal of sanitation fee expiration provision uh, effective November first, twenty twenty, contained in subsection six dot oh four dot oh nine oh, uh, in parentheses, seven of the Bloomington Municipal Code. Please note that this ordinance is being introduced this evening with the possibility that it will be considered for adoption at this same meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary for the council to consider adoption of an ordinance of the same, at the same meeting at which is introduced, and at least a two-thirds vote of those present is required for its passage. Then we'll move to, uh, another item under first readings, ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-five to amend the city of Bloomington zoning maps by rezoning one point three one acres of property from mixed-use employment, ME, to mixed-use minimum scale. I'm sorry, mixed-use medium scale, MM, uh, regarding one thirty, one thirty-five, two oh one, two fifteen, South West, West Plex Avenue. Uh, Wheeler Mission is the petitioner. Then we'll go on to additional public comment. Um, we're a maximum of twenty-five minutes to set aside for this section. Then we'll deal with matters of the council schedule. And then we will adjourn, uh, to reconvene immediately following the regular session, um, in a committee of the whole. Okay, um, we have no minutes this evening. We'll move down to the reports. Do we have any reports from council members? Uh, councilmember Rallo.
Thank you, President Sims. Just wanted to make a sad note on the passing of Jesse Slocum this week, um, AKA Peter Rabbit. Um, longtime Bloomington resident and fifty-plus-year busker in Bloomington's downtown and across the country, uh, and all-around good guy. Um, sad to hear of his passing. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councilmember Rallo. Uh, any other council member reports? Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, I'd just like to invite everybody, especially those who live in District Five, to my monthly constituent meeting, which will take place this coming Saturday, October ninth, from eleven to twelve on Zoom. And you can get the link, um, on the city council website, uh, bloomington.in.gov slash council. And then you can click on my name and, uh, the calendar will come up on the right with the link. So I welcome, um, anybody to participate and chat about city issues. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Piedmont Smith, and councilmember Flaherty.
Thank you, President Sims. I'll, uh, just briefly report on the same topic as my colleague, Ms. Piedmont Smith. Uh, my monthly constituent meetings are on the third Mondays of the month at five thirty PM. Uh, those are all via Zoom for now, so that's Monday, um, October eighteenth uh, this month, and those Zoom details I post on, um, Facebook page, which is, um, Flaherty for Bloomington and Facebook, and then also there on the council calendar, um, online. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councilmember Flaherty. Any further reports from council? Councilmember Sandberg.
Thank you. I will just announce the joint constituent meeting that Dave Rallo and I have uh, on the third Saturday morning. That will be October the sixteenth at ten o'clock. And our Zoom link is posted on the, uh, city council's calendar for anybody that wants that. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Sandberg. Uh, any further council reports? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on down the agenda. Um, under reports, we'll go to Part B, uh, report from the mayor and, and/or city offices. Um, and this is with the EDA Care Act Grant Update. I do believe we have this evening to present Ms. Kaiser Goodman and Ms. of ESD and Ms. Jennifer Pearl of BEDC. Who gets the baton first?
I'll, I'll take it from here, councilmember Sanders.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead and share my screen with the presentation. Can everybody see that all right? Okay. Well, first, thank you so much for having Jen and I here tonight to talk about some updates to the Bloomington Certified Tech Park. I'm going to go over, um, a little bit of background information about the CTP, including the recent recertification application and some updates that we've seen in the last four years since the last recertification. And then I'll hand it over to Jen to talk more in-depth about the EDA Care Act Grant for the Tech Center. So, um, my name is Kaiser Goodman. I'm the Special Projects Manager here in the Department of Economic and Sustainable Development. And my collaborator tonight is Jen Pearl. She's the president of the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation. So, um, just a little bit of background about what a CTP is. Um, a certified tech park is an area that's designated by the Indiana Economic Development Corporation as, that allows for the local recapture of certain state and local tax revenue, which can then be reinvested into the development of the CTP. Um, so it's a little bit similar to a TIF district, um, which more people may be familiar with. The Bloomington CTP, um, that we have was established in two thousand and five when the city of Bloomington submitted an application to the IEDC, which was approved. Um, and we were able to start receiving that, those funds. The goals of the CTP in a broad sense are to support the attraction and growth of high-technology businesses as defined under Indiana Code for what qualifies as a tech business and to promote technology transfer opportunities and commercialization. Um, in layman's terms, tech transfer is the development of new technology or the improvement upon existing technology, which is then made, um, available to the broader society as a whole in order to accelerate innovation. So it's based on the concept of cross-pollination and sharing ideas, um, across disciplines. While commercialization is the process of transitioning technology that's developed from the research lab to the marketplace. The goal is, the third goal of the CTP is to attract private investment, employment, and visitors to the park. So every four years, we submit a recertification application to the IEDC. And basically, this allows us to continue receiving those funds on an annual basis. In the application, we'll just, we have to discuss how the funds have been used, what other investments have been made in the CTP, and whether we're meeting those goals that were just stated. So we just submitted our, um, recertification application for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, um, last week on September thirtieth. And I'm just gonna briefly cover some of the, um, highlights of that application to demonstrate the ways in which we're meeting the CTP goals. But first, a little bit of background about the CTP. It's, um, here in the red area, it's located in northwest part of downtown Bloomington, and it's a total of sixty-five acres, which is a mix of publicly and privately owned land. The yellow rectangle you see is the Trades District. The Trades District is really the heart of the CTP. It's owned by the city of Bloomington, and it's twelve acres, um, that had previously housed the Showers Brothers Furniture Company until the mid-twentieth century, and then went fairly underutilized as far as having a large tract of land in, um, the center of downtown, where it served as storage for IU. The city bought the Trades District in twenty-eleven and developed the Trades District Master Plan. So here's a, just a summary of the funds that we've received since the CTP was certified. From two thousand and five to twenty fifteen, um, one can see that we received funds. These are from three sources, so it's the recapture of state income tax, local income tax, and state sales tax. Now, the lifetime cap for the CTP is five million dollars. We hit that cap in twenty fifteen, which is why you can see we received zero dollars from twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen. But we continue to be a certified CTP. And that was again because we had hit that five-million-dollar lifetime cap. However, in twenty nineteen, the Indiana Legislature changed the law and allowed for a hundred thousand dollars a year in incremental funding to be captured. For any CTP in the state that had already reached that five-million-dollar lifetime cap, we were then able to capture, um, up to a hundred thousand dollars a year, which we did in twenty twenty. If it hadn't been for the cap, I believe we would have captured about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But again, that was capped at a hundred thousand dollar maximum per year. So overall, we've received a total of five-point-one million dollars. So in the CTP, we have a hundred and four different businesses and organizations. Twenty-nine of those meet the Indiana Code's definition of a tech company, while the remaining seventy-five are non-tech companies. These next numbers are based on the results of the self-reported numbers from, um, a survey that we conducted in the first quarter of twenty twenty-one to all of the businesses in the CTP. The CTP currently has seven hundred and eighty-six jobs in it. Three hundred and fifty-eight of those are tech companies, and four twenty-eight are non-tech companies. We also tried to capture the tech transfer activity and found that businesses had a total of forty-two copyrights, nine trademarks, and a hundred and twenty-seven licenses um, that came out of the CTP from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty. Those, um, hundred and four businesses and organizations also received a total of three-point-two million dollars in grants and one-point-six million dollars in research and development credits in those four years. And no conversation about the CTP, um, would be complete without focusing on the mill. The mill is really the engine of the CTP. It's located in the Trades District, and it's a tech incubator and a center for coworking and entrepreneurship. It opened in twenty eighteen, and that's where the vast majority of the CTP funds have been spent, which is rehabbing, um, this building, which was also a part of the Showers Brothers Furniture Company. The mill currently has fifty-three member companies and two hundred and seventy-five individual members who use the cowork space. Another major component of the CTP is demonstrating that we are meeting or exceeding the average wage um, compared to our economic growth region. So here in Bloomington, we are located in Economic Growth Region Eight, which you can see on the map in turquoise. Um, it's, it's an eight-county region of South, um, Central Indiana. Um, and this, these two charts compare the average wage in the economic growth region to the average wage in the CTP, as well as the average tech wage in the economic growth region to the average tech wage in the CTP. For the average wage, we exceeded that every year from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty. For the average tech wage, we exceeded it from twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen, but was slightly below the average EGR wage, tech wage, um, in twenty twenty. However, I do want to point out that the economic growth region numbers, the sixty-eight thousand four hundred and one dollars, was a projection that was made in twenty sixteen, whereas the CTP average tech wage, um, was the actual wage. And we do believe that the, um, COVID-nineteen pandemic played a role in why, um, our wages, both across the board and in the tech sector, were down from the previous year. As companies may have had to lay people off, had decreased revenues, or had people working from other locations. But as a whole, um, the CTP did meet the goal of exceeding the average wage and the average tech wage compared to our economic growth region. Sorry, some more charts. We're almost done with the charts. So, um, this is where we look at the way that funds were spent in the CTP. One of the goals of the CTP is to demonstrate a local commitment to the success of the CTP through the dispersment of funds other than CTP funds. That is to say, we received the five-point-one million dollars, um, from the state, but we also spent an additional twenty-one point three million dollars in the CTP from the years twenty seventeen to twenty twenty. And this is good news for our application because it demonstrates that we, as a community, are committed to the success of the CTP and have, um, invested significant local funds on top of the money that the, um, IEDC has allotted us. So the chart on the right shows the way that CTP funds were dispersed. Aside from small amounts dispersed in twenty twelve and twenty thirteen, you can see that almost all of, well, all of the other funds were spent in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, um, for a total of almost five-point-one million dollars. And that really is, um, uh, that was really spent on building and maintaining the mill as well as other infrastructure in the Trades District, such as Makeaway, um, and, um, the drainage systems that were added. The other funds that were spent in the CTP were used to provide support to the mill for programming and staffing, um, building the Trades District garage, which was a major component, and then, um, also building and maintaining that Trades District infrastructure. So overall, the CTP funds, that five-point-one million dollars, accounted for just nineteen-point-two percent of the total funds dispersed, which shows that we, as a community, have invested a significant amount of, of our local money in the CTP and its success. Um, so I just briefly wanted to cover a few of the other major updates that we've seen in the CTP besides the Dimension Mill, which we discussed earlier. Um, we have, um, built the Trades District Garage, which opened in the spring of this year, and is still being completed with the addition of solar panels and public art. Um, Esteban Garcia Bravo, who's a local artist, is doing Aurora Almanac, which will be done in the stairwells at the building. Um, and the picture you see here is an artist's rendering of it. The Trades District Garage is, um, the first garage in Indiana tied with a Fourth Street Garage to achieve the Park Smart Sustainability credential. And by having that in the Trades District, we are, um, addressing the parking problem um, for businesses that might want to move into the Trades District or people who work at the mill or the future Tech Center. On the subject of public art, we have another piece, OT nine-eight-seven by Stefan Rice, which is expected to be completed this spring. Um, this is going to be near the entrance to the Trades District, and it's a modern art sculpture that uses, um, light as well as intersecting triangular forms with LEDs installed in them. A few other major updates from the CTP. Um, Beeline Heights, which is an affordable housing project off of Roger Street, right across from the Trades District, opened in twenty nineteen. The Trades District Infrastructure Project with roads, sidewalks, and drainage in the Trades District was completed in twenty nineteen. The Killen Collective Agreement was signed in twenty twenty. Um, over the last four years, Elevate Ventures has funded twenty-four startups for a total of one-point-six million dollars, which are located in the mill. And, um, of course, the, um, main reason that we're speaking about this tonight, the Trades District Technology Center. We just received notice that we are receiving a three-point-five-million-dollar grant from the U.S. Economic Development Administration. And this is to build the Tech Center in the Trades District. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague Jen Pearl to speak more about the Trades District Technology Center and the grant process.
All right. Good evening. Thank you so much for having me this evening. It's great to see all of our, um, council members and other colleagues. Um, for those of you that aren't familiar, the BEDC is, um, the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation. We're a nonprofit that serves all of Monroe County in working to retain, grow, and attract quality jobs across the community. Um, and when we talk about economic development, at the end of the day, what that means is creating conditions to help our neighbors connect with prosperity. Um, so it is a very broad field. Um, what you're going to hear about this evening is just one aspect of, um, the types of work that we do in the field with many partners like the city. Um, as Kaiser mentioned, um, the U.S. Economic Development Administration, which is part of the U.S. Department of Commerce, um, at the inception of the pandemic, they announced that, uh, one-point-five billion dollars in CARES Act funds were available for uh, essentially community recovery, um, to help communities sort of recover and weather and get through the pandemic. Uh, it could be used in any number of ways that you see here, um, to diversify economies, strengthen industry sectors, et cetera. Um, and on the next slide, uh, you can see some of the thinking, um, that went into it. Um, the BEDC was pleased to serve on the Economic Stabilization and Recovery Working Group, um, that was launched by the city in, um, March of twenty twenty. Um, and you heard reports last year about how, um, that led to the loan programs and other reopening resources. Um, what happened was the BEDC and City of Bloomington, um, moved forward in partnership to look at ways that we could focus on long-term recovery for the community. Um, and when we were looking at what was needed, um, we found that there was a list of local challenges that were really underscored by the pandemic. Um, first was the need to grow and diversify our community's base of high-quality jobs. Um, we knew this before the pandemic, but it was really brought into, um, light, you know, in the early days of the pandemic, um, based on, uh, the industries and the people that were put out of work at that time. Um, for some time, we've also known the need to retain and attract talent, um, especially those coming out of IU um, or, you know, families that come here where they may have multiple people, um, working in the community. Um, we also found that we've, I haven't been fully leveraging innovation assets like IU and NSWC Crane. Um, so these all presented, um, opportunities that came out of these challenges. Um, we also had opportunities to develop the Trades District Opportunity Zone. That's a federal designation that the Trades District has, um, which essentially brings funding, um, into, um, economically distressed areas of the community. And the BEDC, a number of years ago, was, um, pleased to partner with the city in helping to bring, um, that designation to the zone. Uh, we also were seeking to support direct job, uh, job creation um, through an emerging, uh, sector for our economy, um, through tech companies, and indirect job creation through businesses that work with them. Um, as Kaiser had mentioned, you know, if you look back into the history of our local economy, we moved from, um, you know, being a leader in furniture making with the Showers Brothers Furniture Company, making like sixty percent of the furniture in North America, um, on to manufacturing in the mid-twentieth century, um, with the rise of RCA, uh, Westinghouse and others. Um, as that went by the wayside, in the nineties, you saw the rise of life sciences, um, with Cook and other leaders in the community. And what we've been looking to do is find ways to foster future-focused jobs to help build resilience for our community, while also serving and connecting to other, uh, industries, not only in Bloomington, but also Monroe County and the larger region as a whole. Um, and finally, we saw there was an opportunity to attract further investment to the Trades District, um, through what we were about to propose, uh, and that you'll see on the next slide. Um, so the concept that we put forward, uh, was to construct a tech center. Um, and it would be a hub that essentially does two things. One is it would provide space for tech companies, and it would provide programming and services, um, for those that are growing throughout the region. Our community is currently home to probably thirty or forty different tech companies, um, at all different levels. Uh, we also have great, um, technology and research coming out of the university and other places. Um, this center, uh, to be based in the Trades District, would have proximity to downtown Bloomington, um, the mill, and other, um, amenities. And what's important to note is, um, you know, the concept with the mill was to, um, support startups. This tech center is actually going to be focused on post-startup companies, helping them grow, um, not only by connecting to funding and resources and other, um, collaborators across the community, but also the region, the state, nationally and internationally. So it's really growing that pipeline, um, that started, um, earlier with the mill. And we were pleased to, um, the BEDC was pleased to partner with the city of Bloomington in helping to establish the mill in its early days in setting up the nonprofit. Um, on the next slide, you will see, um, a bit more detail about the Tech Center. Um, so the vision is to advance South Central Indiana tech employment growth and the commercialization of technology, um, while contributing to a stronger brand for the region in technology. Uh, it's amazing as we talk to people even across our community that don't realize, um, just all the tech that's here. Um, we have, um, software as a service. We have AI, machine learning, quantum computing, um, and many other areas of tech that are specialties in this community. We'd also look to seek, um, we'd connect growing tech companies to national and international networks. Again, the focus is on those that are beyond the startup phase with services and space for growing and mature firms. Uh, it'll be located in the test tech district, uh, in the Trades District, and it will be managed by a nonprofit, um, called the Trades District Technology Center. Here you can see, uh, the location. Um, so the dotted line is the project site, um, and it's just diagonal from the mill. And then, um, just, uh, below that, you can see where the new, um, Trades District parking garage is. Um, so it's really centrally located. It's also important to note, too, that this is, um, another anchor, uh, for the Trades District, and, um, the green spaces have been, you know, planned for some time to attract, um, other companies that may wish to be there. So this is, um, another piece that we hope will continue to attract others. So, uh, in terms of the grant, so, um, Kaiser already, uh, let the cat out of the bag and, uh, which is awesome. The, uh, USEDA has announced, uh, as of early September that they will be providing three-and-a-half million dollars for this project. Um, we're thrilled, um, that this money could be coming into the community. Um, the City of Bloomington Redevelopment Commission has committed one-point-nine million dollars in funds for the project. Um, the EDA requires community matches to make sure that, um, these things can come a reality. We have in-kind and additional contributions from the city, the BEDC, the IU Innovation and Commercialization Office, and the Ivy Tech Yale and Bill Cook Center for Entrepreneurship. Um, what's also exciting about this is the estimated long-term impact. Um, the EDA does not fund projects that don't have a feasibility study, um, that you can't prove that it's needed for the community. Um, they're very careful about the data that's put forth. And we actually worked, uh, with an independent third party to try to estimate the impact that this may have on our community in the coming years. Um, the IU Public Policy Institute, led by Tom Guevara, um, worked with us, this, with us on this project. And what you can see here is their estimate of the, um, the impact of this center over ten years of the project, for the first ten years. Um, so the total estimated private sector jobs is eight-hundred-sixty-six total over ten years. Um, among those jobs, five-hundred-thirty would be direct jobs, meaning those directly in the Tech Center, um, from those that would be served by the Tech Center, as well as three-hundred-thirty-six indirect and induced jobs. Those would be among, um, firms that work with tech companies that may serve them, um, across all other fields. Um, they also estimate that it would lead to fifty-one-and-a-half million dollars in, um, total estimated private investment to be created over a ten-year period, as well as two-hundred-and-eighteen million dollars estimated total economic impact over ten years. Um, these two things are important to note because this is money coming into the community that, um, not only flows to other businesses and employers, but also, um, flows into the local tax base. Um, so we're really thrilled that this is something, um, if, if successful, that we think will um, be a great step into the future as we're trying to foster these future-focused jobs. Um, this project.
Excuse me, Ms. Pearl.
Yes.
If you don't mind, if you could finish up, um, I've been reminded this has been a little over twenty minutes. So if you don't mind finishing up, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. So, uh, thank you. Well, so, and I meant the thank yous. So this is, um, what you see here on this slide is, um, all of the application partners and collaborators on the City of Bloomington Redevelopment Commission, um, the Economic and Sustainable Development Department under Alex Crowley. I want to give a huge shout-out to Kaiser Goodman, uh, as she was the project manager on this project. Um, BDC officers, staff members, and others, and all of the collaborators that you see on this list here, many of which were mentioned before. And then the last slide, um, honestly, we had close to forty other partners that contributed in some way to this project. Um, everyone you see on the list here participated in, um, you know, focus groups, providing letters of support, and just other advice. And among the, um, team that's here this evening, we wanted to give a shout-out to the Bloomington Common Council Sustainable Development Committee. And among the team that's here this evening, we wanted to give a shout out to the Bloomington Common Council Sustainable Development Committee, which had provided a letter of support for this project. So with that, we thank you so much for your time. My contact is here, along with Kaiza's, and we look forward to what this can bring to the community.
Okay. Thank you for unsharing the screen, and thank you so much for the report, Ms. Pearl and Ms. Goodman. We'll now go to City Council. Does anyone have any questions on this presentation to the presenters? Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes, I want to thank you both for the report. I appreciate it very much, and the new project seems interesting. The question I had when listening to the report was, my mind went back to the 2013 plan that Ms. Goodman mentioned. The plan seems to be long in the tooth. I mean, on page 30, which is a page just devoted to the supposed parking needs of the tech district, it calls for a five-level 910 space garage to go right where this building is going to go. So I guess my question is, and this is not the only thing that seems out of date with respect to the way that the tech park is going, can you all speak to the master plan and whether it needs to be revised?
So I can speak to that a little bit. I think that, and Alex Crowley, who's here as well, is welcome to jump in since he's been around longer. But I would just say that, I think that, I do see what you're saying, Steve, on page 30 of the report. I think that this is a template for what we wanted to do, and there's obviously going to be adjustments that are made logistically. I think it's possible that after this plan was made, for the analysis was done of the best location for a parking garage, and it ended up being a little bit further south. But still accessible and able to provide the same impact to the Trades District as the proposed location.
Well, I mean, there was supposed to be a second garage built not too far from this one, and not where the current garage is. It was also going to be 550 spaces, not to mention another 900 spaces of new surface lot parking. So I just wonder if that is still a priority specifically to build that much parking.
Kaiza, I can jump in if you want. Our objective with the Trades District Garage was to do a down payment on parking. So what we learned in the process of the, I'm sorry, this is Alex Crowley, I'm Director of Economic and Sustainable Development.
Thank you.
What we, what we learned early on as we were activating the Trades District in 2017 and 18 was private development was very anxious about where they might be able to park tenants of future private development. So our hope is that we don't need the parking capacity that was originally conceived of and detailed in the original CTP plan. We did need to signal to the market that parking would be something that the Trades District would be able to solve for. And so the Trades District Garage is meant to signal that. What we're hoping to see out of that is investments, private investment flowing, as was originally detailed in the CTP master plan. And that a certain amount of that parking, additional parking beyond what was built into the Trades District Garage could be solved for onsite. But we certainly don't want to necessarily just blindly adhere to the original CTP master plan parking capacity in light of developments that, you know, that hopefully require less parking. So that, you know, we'll see what the future holds there. Certainly, it was necessary to put an initial parking garage in there to stimulate initial private investment, and we'll hopefully be able to suppress the total volume that was contemplated in the CTP master plan and be able to come up with more creative ways to attract tenants.
Well, I appreciate that answer. Can I just, one more follow-up? I can wait. Okay, thank you.
Well, if you don't mind waiting, then I'd appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Crowley and Ms. Goodman. Do we have any other first-round questions from councilmembers? Okay, Councilmember Bowlin, thank you for your patience, please.
Sure, thank you. So above the line item where it describes the garage that's being replaced by this hub, our 11 line items of buildings called for in the district that all call for parking spaces at the rough rate of about three spaces per thousand square feet of office space, which is pretty extraordinary. Each building would have that attached to it. And I mean, the primary reason I voted for the Trades Garage was because if you have a centralized garage space and the buildings that get built don't need to provide their own parking. And I wonder if that is the current thinking among ESD and BDC people. In other words, can we eliminate this call for parking spaces for each building in favor of parking concentrated in garages?
That is the, that is the strategy. There's going to be, you know, as you probably know, there's going to be probably some onsite parking benefit to buildings, and we're hoping to minimize that and to consolidate into more dense and unified parking structures. So, you know, if you're a, if you're a company, you may want to have some visitor parking very close to your facility. That can be solved for locally on any given development lot. But on the whole, employee parking, you know, more of that would be happening in more concentrated areas like what we have in the Trades District Garage.
That's encouraging to hear. So, but otherwise, is there, what, what do you all do with this plan when it seems so far from where you are now? Like, to what extent do you, do you consider the tech park plan from 2013 with, in light of plans like what you just announced today?
I think the basic, the basic strategy of the plan is still good. I don't know that the plan was meant to be, you know, to be a plan that adhered to the letter of the plan. You know, things change. I think they, I'm certain, this was before my time, but I'm certain they realized that that would be the case. So I don't know if it makes sense. It's a good, it's a good thing to think about whether or not we should go in and revise it. I think the basic strategy of it holds, the basic objectives of it hold. There were things that were tweaked, you know, for example, make her way, the road that goes through the middle, I don't think was envisioned. So there were definitely little changes here and there, and by virtue of that road, plopping a huge garage in the middle wouldn't necessarily make sense anymore. It could be that we go in and update it, but I think really the effort right now should be concentrated on holding to the original strategies and goals of the plan, executing against those, and really looking to drive private development, which we think the EDA grant will help stimulate. So we, so we're very interested in, and I've had very specific discussions with players that will be involved in leveraging the excitement around this EDA commercialization center and driving that to stimulate local private development.
Thank you. Those are encouraging words. I appreciate them. But I still would like to come in and tear out your page 30 of all your copies of the plan. Anyway, thanks so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Bowlin. Any further questions from council? Okay, thank you, Ms. Goodman, Ms. Pearl, and Mr. Crowley. And I would suggest that if you pull all those pages out, Mr. Bowlin, please shred them properly and recycle accordingly.
We'll do, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. Okay, we'll move on into the agenda. Do we have any reports regarding council committees or from council committees? Seeing none, I will now move to public comments. Please indicate your desire to make a public comment by using the raised hand function in Zoom. You can get there through either the Participants button, the Reactions tab, or the more buttons. If you're on a mobile device, Smartphone Stars 9 should be able to get you to us. Or you could send a note, should all these others fail, to the meeting host via the chat function on Zoom. And I would remind anyone who wants to public speak to please identify yourself. Lastly, members of the public may speak on matters of community concern not listed on the agenda at one of these two public comment opportunities. Citizens may speak at one of these periods, but not both. Speakers will be allowed five minutes this evening. Mr. Lucas, do we have anyone that you see?
Yes, first up is Jim Shelton. And I'll apologize again. I thought we had the meeting timer working. It appears to have dropped out again, so we'll try to give you a five-minute notice when we get to five minutes, if the comments go that long. Mr. Shelton should now be able to unmute.
Actually, before we go further, and I think I just announced three minutes for public comment.
Oh, excuse me.
That's quite all right. That's quite okay. Mr. Shelton, if you're ready.
Good evening, Council. Jim Shelton with the chamber. Been speaking tonight again on behalf of the Court of Pointe Special Advocates or CASA program. I hope you saw in the Herald-Times article the other day, it's been online a couple of days. And if you didn't, I would invite you, you know, take a look at it. It has sad news, really, that probably as a result of the pandemic, there are more and more children entering the court system because they've been physically abused by their parents. The frustration, I'm sure, the stress, et cetera, that the pandemic has caused, and lost jobs or lost income is probably the reason. But regardless of the reason, we're ending up with more children who are being physically abused and are therefore being removed from their parents and being subject to the juvenile court system. This means we need more volunteers to serve as Court of Pointe Special Advocates or CASAs for these children. Right now, our waiting list is back up to about 30 people. We have a class starting on the 18th, and I'm sure it's too late to get an application in for. But just wanted to make the public aware that this is a situation. It's not going to go away anytime soon. And the next training is going to be sometime around the middle of February. So for those who've just thought about it a little and haven't really decided if this is for them or not, you've got the time between now and then to hopefully look into it and decide that it is something that you would be able to help with. You can go to monroecountycasa.org, click on the volunteer link. There's a frequently asked question page that provides a lot of the things you need to know. Or you can call 333-2272 and talk to one of the staff members. This is a very wonderful volunteer opportunity. It can be very satisfying. I've got a case that maybe even in the next two days, we'll get to the point that DCS will recommend closure. The children are in great shape. The parents have straightened themselves out. There's just some bureaucratic paperwork that has to be accomplished. And I've been working on that now for about three years, and another lady had it for a year before that, before she had her first baby. So it's taken a long time, a lot of hard work. The parents have put in a lot of hard work. And the little four-and-a-half-year-old guy is now living with them on a trial-home visit basis. And hopefully, we will make that permanent here in the next few days. So it's very satisfying. It's very needed, and I invite people to look into it. And if you really want to hurry and get the application in today, or I'm sorry, well, you can do it online. So today or tomorrow, you might be able to get in this class that starts the 18th. Thank you very much for the opportunity to spread that word.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Shelton. Do we have anyone else?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay, give it just a second. And seeing none, we'll move on into the agenda. We'll move down to appointments to boards and commissions. Do we have any appointments to boards and commissions from my council colleagues? Okay, seeing none, I would like to take this opportunity. I think this is where it fits in the agenda. This is neither a board or a commission, however, it is an internal working group. In the Climate Action Plan, in particular on page 123, covering implementation topics, it says, "Establish a designated council representative participant in the city's internal climate working group in support of climate action plan implementation." I would like to make a nomination for that, or an assignment, nomination for that position this evening. It also, in my determination, it may be that, or could be that, either the Chair of the Climate Action and Resilience Committee or the Council's BCOs representative should or could fill that role. It just so happens that Councilmember Matt Flaherty fills both of those roles and in discussions has agreed to accept this position on working with the city's internal climate working group. So having said that, I will now entertain a motion to nominate Councilmember Flaherty to this city's internal climate working group in support of the community act, I'm sorry, climate action plan implementation.
Go ahead, Isabel.
Oh, I thought there was a motion, so I was going to second it.
There was no motion.
Oh.
I will entertain, I will entertain one, however.
I'd like to move that Matt Flaherty be appointed and serve as the council's appointee to the city's working group on climate, I believe. What was the-
Internal climate working group.
The internal climate working group for the city of Bloomington.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded on that nomination. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Bowlin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scamblerie?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Same.
I'm sorry, Flaherty?
Abstain.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that motion to nominate passes 801. And before we move forward, thank you very much, Councilmember Flaherty, for agreeing to serve. And at some point in the future, we would expect to hear a report from you or as part of that internal working group. So again, thank you for your willingness to serve. Now, moving on down the agenda, I do believe we have legislation for second readings and resolutions. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move that ordinance 21-34 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Thank you. It's been properly moved that ordinance 21-34 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scamblerie?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo? I'm sorry, Rallo? Thank you.
Okay, I've heard from Councilmember Rallo that it passes 80. Councilmember Flaherty?
We need the, sorry, we need the clerk to read, I believe, on this.
I'm so sorry. You absolutely were. Would the clerk please read? Thank you.
Ordinance 21-34 to amend Title II of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Administration and Personnel Regarding Amending BMC 2.04.420 Motion to Adjourn or Recede to Place Greater Limits on the Duration of Council Meetings That They May End at a Reasonable Hour. The synopsis is, this ordinance is authored by Councilmember Bowlin and amends Section 2.04.420 of the Bloomington Municipal Code, Motion to Adjourn or Recede to provide that any meetings of the common council or its committees shall not continue after five and a half hours from the meeting's call to order or after 11:59 PM local time without unanimous consent of the members present.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty?
Move that ordinance 21-34 be adopted?
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded. Councilmember Bowlin, I think this is the proper time to introduce your amendment.
Thank you, yes. Well,
Thank you, yes. Well. Again, this ordinance basically says that meetings should have limits, time limit. We have been introduced.
I'm sorry, I'm, and I don't mean to interrupt you. Is this the time to introduce an amendment? I thought you had amendments.
I'm presenting the ordinance to the council because it came out of committee, so.
Absolutely right. All right. Sorry about that. Thank you. Please proceed.
I mean, but I'm going to talk about the amendments in short order. So again, the principle here is that meetings should have limits. We have seen how when the timer is working, of course. And we put time limits on individuals, whether they be members of the public or council members, that people respond well to being time limited. But we still have a problem with meetings that can go into all hours of the night. And one of the points I made in the material that accompanies the ordinance is that on average, at least twice a year since twenty fifteen, we've had meetings go past five and a half hours. And this is simply put too long. We should not be going into the wee small hours of the night for any reason. It's always better to divide up the work to another night. So what I'm proposing is that we require that, I mean, we we don't want to require to schedule an end time specifically for any meeting. If we don't need, if we need two hours, we don't have to schedule five and a half, but the public should know that we are willing to limit ourselves to what I have called a reasonable hour, which is basically midnight. So that's what the ordinance does, but some of the concern at committee, the whole was expressed about the notion of unanimous consent to continue. And I want to emphasize that this is about ending meetings by a certain reasonable hour, not necessarily how it gets ended. So the two amendments that you have in your packets give two different approaches to that. So again, the ordinance says that even one member, after five and a half hours, any member of council can call for adjournment and the meeting will be adjourned. And there was some concern about that being somehow too much power for one member. So Amendment One to this ordinance actually removes the requirement of any consent. It automatically ends meetings after five and a half hours or after midnight, whichever comes first. And so it would behoove us to finish all our work by five and a half hours. Otherwise, whatever actions we attempt to take would not be valid. The other amendment actually requires a motion and a second to adjourn a meeting. So two members can cause a meeting to end, and it would take eight members to continue, assuming that all nine members are still there and that one member hasn't gone home. So there's two different approaches. They go on either side of what the original ordinance proposed. All and I'm I'm ambivalent as to which amendment members would prefer. They're mutually exclusive. I would like in the Q and A to get a sense of what council members prefer, and I'll be happy to advance the one that seems to be of more interest to members, but the idea isn't about who triggers it. The idea is that we all commit to limiting our, the length of our meetings overall, because it benefits no one, no one to to go to deliberate that late. The decisions are not better that late. They can always be moved to the next day. So and again, just a reminder, the ordinance as a whole, also in order to prevent a gaming of this idea by having somebody perhaps recessing at five minutes to midnight and then you know, resuming in the next calendar day, the ordinance does say that if if there is a motion to recess to another day, in other words, after midnight, which is the next day, then the meeting cannot be resumed until at least twenty-four hours after the meeting was called to order the previous day. So that to prevent also meetings being resumed, say at nine in the morning or three in the afternoon, it should be at the normal times that we typically meet and deliberate. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions. I would like to get a sense from members of if they prefer one amendment or the other.
Thank you. And before I entertain questions, I'd like to go to the parliamentarian. It is my understanding that amendments are, they're emotionally made soon after the motion to adopt. So my question is, do we move to the amendment? Or do we begin with council comments? I'm sorry, council questions?
Yeah, this is a little unconventional in that the sponsor, Councilmember Bolin is asking for feedback on which amendment to bring. But that require council comment or debate of some kind and not a question period. So we could.
I'm sorry.
I mean, we could go immediately to public comment and then into additional council member question or debate. And then consider amendments after debate. It's a bit of a, or or perhaps we should just suggest that if if a member has has a preference for one of the amendments, they should they themselves could move it.
Thank you. That's, and thank you for your response. That's why I ask you. One of my reasons for asking that is that if Councilmember Bolin's amendment number two is, if it's adopted, then number one can't be adopted. And number three, if I'm not mistaken, wouldn't be needed. So that was, go ahead, Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, that's correct. I'll just add one more point that I suppose Roberts rules and our processes are meant to facilitate meeting efficiency, and I think the Chair, U S Chair, Mr. President, would be within your discretion to allow a different norm in this case, to allow feedback on 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 amendment preference to facilitate the this, our handling of this ordinance as well. Our our counsel attorney can feel free to correct me if if he thinks that's incorrect as well.
Mr. Lucas, do you have any input on that? Based on what I said before, if one is adopted, the other won't can't be adopted and then the third won't be needed. It was my understanding, I thought we would start with amendment number two, but I defer to the parliamentarian and our council staff.
I think currently the motion pending is a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-one thirty-four. I would suggest going to questions on that ordinance. If through questioning, members decide to move either Amendment One or Two, they could do so at any time, but until that motion is made, I I think you would go to questions on the ordinance as written. Through that questioning period, if members want to get at what Councilmember Bolin was asking, which which approach they might prefer. I I think that would be proper.
Thank you very much, both of you. I appreciate your input. We'll now go to council questions. Of the sponsor of ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-four, Councilmember Rallo.
Well, there are exceptions to everything, and I think that we need to guard against those exceptions. And I think that Councilmember Bolin, when you were considering these amendments, the the amendments, which is number two. To safeguard the process to is 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 better to adjourn the meeting rather than it happening automatically. I mean, it is that the intent and I, if so, I I think that's.
Mr. Rallo, you dropped out a little bit, and I didn't quite hear the whole question. Could you restate it? Could you restate the question?
I'm getting. Yeah, am I freezing?
A little bit.
You are fine now. Go ahead. Please proceed.
Okay, there's, Amendment Two is to safeguard an automated adjournment because there could be exceptions. We 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 could need to finish business that evening. And having the the safeguard of two people required to adjourn a meeting seems to acknowledge that. Is that correct, Mr. Bolin?
I mean, yeah, pretty much, you know, like if if you want to call it a safeguard, again, I I don't think that the method of triggering the end of the meeting is the significant part. It's the idea that we would commit to an unsuspendable time limit or a right to limit meetings after a certain period of time. But I mean, if in it with respect to the ordinance as written. If you think that unanimous consent is too high a bar, then yes, Amendment Two lowers the bar a bit. It makes it two members instead of one. That would be required to 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 move to adjourn.
Thank you. Do we have any further questions from council members on ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-four? And hopefully through discussion, the sponsor can decide which amendment he'd like to proceed with. Councilmember Sandberg.
Thank you. I I certainly appreciate the intent of this ordinance. I have always been a little bit concerned with anything that's inflexible, like for instance, if if I could give a an example, say, we are approaching the midnight hour when we're going to automatically stop. But the issue on the table is just inches away from being determined and decided. At that point, I would certainly be more in favor of the amendment that would allow for that extenuating circumstance. And I think that's what Councilmember Rallo is getting at. It's nice to have predictability. It's nice to be flexible, but the rigidity sometimes. As somebody who absolutely likes to get to bed at a reasonable hour. Sometimes there's business that we just have to do, and that's what I would, I'm looking for, is a way to put that flexibility in there for those you know, circumstances that we don't need to kick this to the next week if we have the ability to wrap it up in ten, fifteen minutes. Does that make sense?
It does. It's a good question. I'm glad you asked it. So let me try to address. There's actually, I think, two facets to it. One of them is something that quote unquote has to get done tonight, you know, and we've had that before with respect to, it's like the last day of the month, and there's some state mandated deadline, and we have to pass this before midnight or, you know. Now, that that is a thing that has happened before, although we've never, in my experience, had a meeting where we were bumping up against that deadline. So it's a possibility, but it's never actually happened to my knowledge. The second is that we're, as you said, we're very close to resolving this final issue. But we have to ask the question, how many issues themselves alone took five and a half hours to resolve? The, in my experience, the one time that happened was on March third with the ordinance twenty-one oh six. There was actually six full hours of discussion at that time, but other controversial issues took four, four and a half. And they were part of a meeting where there were multiple items on the agenda. So part of the admonition that this ordinance presents is to say, look. Are we assuming too much about what we can do in a given night? If we know that there's a, you know, there are times when we know legislation is really controversial, it's going to have a a lot of deliberation. And there are times when it surprises us. Okay, either way, there's two different ways to think about it. One is at five hours and fifteen minutes or so, when everyone can see the deadline coming, it's time to start making motions thinking about recess. The other is to think about, is there a way we could redo our agenda so that maybe we postpone an item that's not as important to another another regular session? Okay, but like this is, we all too often, instead, what we, what I see happen is what happens, like I said, during the first committee of the whole on the issue of the plexes, where we saw that there was maybe a couple more people who wanted to speak. Okay, but it turns out that when we took down, we were getting to to a late hour that we wanted to quit. And it turns out that we went to the next night and those people who had, who we, whose names we took down, and they spoke that night. It took more than an hour to to say what they were going to say. So I think that all we're almost there thing is kind of illusory and that we can anticipate. You know, the, we and should be anticipating the end of the meeting as surely as each of us individually anticipates the end of our allotted time to speak to an issue. Please, go ahead.
If if I could follow up, I think another mechanism that we certainly have at our disposal is the traffic controlling of the issue. If I might remind everyone on that infamous March third night. That was not the only issue on the agenda, and it started quite late in the evening. And so I think in addition to us being mindful of being disciplinary in our own timing and and ending at a reasonable hour, I think we need to traffic control our agenda in a way where we don't bump up against something that's potentially controversial that needs that kind of bedding in the public. So there are other ways around this as far as I'm concerned. I don't know if you have any response to that in terms of how we schedule our agenda.
Right. I mean, we handled, how we handled annexation was how we should have handled that ordinance. So we saw that there was a large crowd, and most of the time of that six hour period where we deliberated on twenty-one oh six had was devoted to public comment. There were many people who wanted to speak. When we can see two hundred and fifty people attending a Zoom meeting, we can fairly guess that perhaps we should limit the amount of public comment that night and then take it up again on another night. Now, none of us were really thinking that way at that time. We were all thinking like this is how council works. We do everything on the night that we schedule it. Okay, but after that night. We, you know, the the President Sims, rightly seeing that the plexes and annexation were going to be significant issues, intentionally scheduled additional nights. That is the better solution. That is always a better solution. You know, I think that, and that this is not a part of the proposal, but I think that all public comment on a given issue should be limited to three hours in a given night. You know, and I would also like to see us do things like signing up people to speak. That's many, many cities require you to sign up in order to have a right to speak, partly for this reason. So the fact that we have this kind of open public comment where we don't you know, ask people to get in line on paper has caused us to have these really late meetings. So why should any issue have more than three hours of public comment? Just I'm pulling a number out of the air in a given night when we could if we know it's going to be four, five or six hours, let's anticipate it by breaking it up into a second night. So those are the ways I would approach it, but I honestly think that you know, the way we handled it then was, is a way we shouldn't repeat.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions from Councilmember Bolin from our council colleagues? Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bolin, for bringing this forward. I I think I asked this question before and I'm and I I'm still puzzled about it. So if it would take, in in this case, the amendment where it would take two people to I get a little confused. Is it, we would then can, if they both vote yes, then we're going to continue with the meeting or we're going to end the meeting?
So if after midnight, on a typical night that starts at six thirty, if a member moves to adjourn and another member seconds the motion, that ends the meeting. So it does provide a little flexibility, a little bit more than what the original ordinance is written does. Okay, but it's still a pretty high bar for continuing, a higher bar than we're used to.
So that was my preliminary question, and if I if I can ask, then the central question is if it was why could not, you know, we just make it that it would be a majority? So that five would take five people.
Well, that's that's what we have now. It takes five people to adjourn. Now, we haven't had the actual vote lately because it's been evident to everybody that we've gotten through all of our agenda. And so the president doesn't even bother to call a vote. We just adjourn, but it technically takes five people to vote to adjourn. That's the way it is now. And and again, the council has always tended to favor let's just keep going because it's just a little bit longer. It's never a little bit longer. So I'm proposing that we reduce that number from five to one. If I move Amendment Two, I'll propose to move it. If I move amendment two, I'll propose to move it from five to two members. Would uh be able to, uh, again, only after five and a half hours of deliberation or after midnight. Okay, so it's a it's a pretty wide bar. Five and a half hours should be plenty of time. Okay. That helps.
Yeah.
Any further questions from council? Okay, I'm seeing none, and I will admit. This is a little different. Um, this is comments or questions on the actual ordinance. But some of that could be used if we get to an amendment, so I don't know how interla- overlapping that could be. However. Um, I do have a question. Um, am I allowed to answer that, Mr. Boland? Thank you. Okay, um. I will point out that any council member at any time can move to adjourn a a meeting. Um, that's the first thing, but my question, direct question to you is. And I know this isn't part of your proposal, but you mentioned limiting public comment to three hours. And I guess my question is, is that in the totality within your five and a half hour proposal? And if public comment needed more than three hours with that, automatically activate a special session or a need to reschedule. Uh, just just based on on public comment that might.
Right.
Which I think one of the reasons what we're here for is to hear from the public, but I'd like to hear your response to that.
Thanks for the question. So uh, my ordinance is silent. On how we conduct our meeting within that five and a half hour period. Uh, but I would say that there is a simple metric for determining. Uh, I mean, let's just say that with that three hours in principle is the amount of time we devote to any one issue. That is controversial, that is a lot of people who've come from the public to speak. Let us say that we typically give, I mean, and this year we gave people three or five minutes. Let's just say it's three minutes. Okay, that's sixty people in three hours. Okay, now generally we can fit a few more than that. Let's call it seventy, seventy-five people. Let's say that we can do twenty-five an hour on the average. We have to to check, but max the at minimum. Uh, you know, if everybody uses their three minutes, that's twenty people per hour. Uh, if we see more than sixty or seventy-five people in the audience, if there's a hundred people, a hundred and fifty people, okay. Uh, it's reasonable to assume that many of them are there to speak. And uh, if we're, you know, if we're gonna ever have a long meeting again like that. Uh, we, they would, everyone in the public would benefit from knowing. That there's an end time to the meeting, that we're going to take two hours of comment or three hours of comment tonight. That we'll have a second meeting where we'll take the other hour or two of comment. We can break it down any way we want. We don't have to have three hours as our limit. And uh, and schedule another night that that would be up to the discretion of the the president. Um, oftentimes we have a a fallow Wednesday, but we've all uh proven. Uh, this year that we're capable of meeting on non-Wednesday nights. So I'm kind of agnostic about how it's done, but that is the way that I would recommend thinking about it. I don't, I don't know if that helps.
Thank you. Do we have any other final questions? I'm sorry, any other questions of councilmember Boland? Okay, um, councilmember Flaherty, I guess, do I now, councilmember Boland?
Yes, uh, because the amendments are authored by me, I have chosen not yet to introduce them.
Two, two of the three are authored by you, yes.
Right, well, they're numbered one and two. Uh, and they're mutually exclusive, as we noted. So based on the conversation, I'd like to move amendment two.
Second.
Thank you. Um, amendment two's been moved in second. Um, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Sorry, Mr. President.
Yeah.
Uh, for for the the motion to adopt the amendment, we can just go straight into presentation.
Thank you. Sorry, no need. Sorry about that, Clerk McCall. Okay, um, please proceed, councilmember Boland.
Yes, just briefly, um, I did want to mention that uh, this amendment. Um, also takes into account. The the phrasing like committee of the whole uh does not permit the motion to adjourn. Uh, the only, the way to end the committee of the whole is rise and report. And uh. I thought that was, I mean, I'm looking at it now, but I I thought it was, Mr. Lucas, did we get, didn't that phrase make its way into amendment two? The rise and report?
I'm looking right at it in the middle of your, so is that what you're looking for?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking at amendment one. My bad. Yeah, so I just, okay, sorry. I was looking at the wrong amendment. So yeah, the this takes into account the content of amendment three. So if amendment two passes again, amendment three would also be moved. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, council questions on amendment number two. Of ordinance twenty one dash thirty four, councilmember Scambler.
Yes, thank you. Um, and thank you for all the work you've done on this on this ordinance. Just to be clear, a motion and a second, if amendment two and this ordinance pass. A motion and a second would be sufficient to end the meeting, correct? So that would by, if I'm carrying that to its logical conclusion. That motion is not debatable then. As soon as it gets a second, it takes effect. Is that correct?
Uh, well, motions to adjourn are not a not debatable.
Okay.
Motions to recess are debatable. So.
So this, okay.
Wait, have I got it backwards, Mr. Lucas?
Hang on, hang on, councilmember, or I'm sorry, Mr. Lucas.
Uh, yes, thank you. I I believe our local code provides that uh, a motion to adjourn or recess shall be decided without debate.
Okay.
So neither is debatable.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further questions from councilmembers on amendment number two? Of ordinance twenty one dash thirty four, councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, I just have a question um, about uh. It's not really about the amendment, but it's it's the language is still there in the amendment. Um. So an amend, uh, a mo- motion to adjourn shall take precedence over a motion to recess. Does that mean that if somebody moves to recess to say seven P M. the next day? Um, somebody else can ju- jump in before a vote on the motion to recess and say, I move to adjourn. Is that how that works?
Well, uh, the president has to acknowledge somebody before they can make a motion. Um, you know, a member can call for a point of order, but the still the president has to to acknowledge them. Um, but again, remember, this is after five and a half hours. Um, but to whoever, I mean, if if there's clearly competing efforts to make a motion, the president has to choose between them. Uh, but uh, in that case, yes, uh, motion to adjourn should, in this case, take precedence over a motion to recess. Why? Because uh, the point is to end the meeting at five and a half hours, full stop. And so again, what I recommend is that at five hours, at five hours fifteen, if if uh, anyone is feeling like. They should continue the meeting, they should do it then rather than push up against the five and a half hour deadline. So that's, that's why it reads that um. Motion to adjourn would take precedence over motion to recess. That's a pretty technical occurrence. Again, I would just recommend that with a few minutes to go, someone make a motion to recess, which can be debated. And there it takes time to debate a motion to recess. If you allow a motion to recess at five and a half hours. Well, then the meeting keeps going longer. Who knows how long the motion to recess will take to be debated. Without that, again, the five and a half hour limit becomes five and five, three, five and three quarters, six, six and a quarter hours. And we keep having the same problem.
I thought that um, Mr. Lucas just said there's no debate on a council, on a motion to recess. And also no debate on a motion to adjourn. Did I mishear that?
Well, he did just say that I had uh, forgotten that local code does not allow debate in a motion to recess. Um, that Roberts does allow it, but local code doesn't, so. You know, again, this only matters at the five and a half hour mark. If the motion to recess is made before five and a half hours, it doesn't take precedence. It does, the motion to recess does take precedence over the motion to adjourn.
But I assume, yeah, I'm just trying to logistically think how this works. So if if there's a motion. On the table, I assume that a motion for which there is a vote, like a motion to recess, I assume that. The chair of the meeting or the president would not allow another motion until that first one is taken care of.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, customer Piedmont Smith. Any further questions from council? Okay, this is on amendment number two of ordinance twenty one dash thirty four. Seeing none, uh, we will now go to public comment. Um, on amendment number two of ordinance twenty one dash thirty four. Um, if there is any public comment, I would please remind you to use the raised hand function in Zoom to indicate your desire to speak. Um, you can do that by using either the participants tab, the reactions tab, or the more buttons tab. Um, or if you're on a mobile device or a mobile phone, star nine should get you there. Neither of those work, please send a note to the meeting host via the chat function on Zoom. Um, and I will again remind a public to identify yourself um, once you're recognized. Do we have anyone, Mr. Lucas?
Yes, I do believe I've, if you'll give me just a moment.
Yes.
Uh, I assume this is a comment, uh, Mr. Askins would like me to read. Uh, this is from the B square beacon or excuse me, the um. Just be square, uh, even on the scenario where it takes two council members to adjourn the meeting. There's no certainty for the public, but it's to sit on the edge of their seats, waiting to see if anyone will move to adjourn and if there will be a second. What might be useful is to think about legislating the behavior of the chair instead of trying to legislate the meeting time directly. For example, at the earliest opportunity after five point five and a half hours of session time or when the clock time is on the opposite side of midnight. From the. Time the session was convened, whichever comes first, the chair must must ask for a roll call vote on the following undebatable question. Is it the will of this council that during the, that the duration of the meeting be extended extended for up to one additional hour? If the council gives an affirmative answer to the question on a two-thirds majority. The chair must therefore ask for a roll call vote on the same question after each additional hour of meeting time. Have any of the council members considered that kind of approach? And that is the end of the comment. And I don't see any additional requests for public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you. And seeing none, we'll now go to council for final comment on. Amendment number two of ordinance twenty one dash thirty four. Any final comments? Seeing none.
Councilmember Boland?
Councilmember, thank you, councilmember, so, councilmember Boland.
Yes, I I will just point out that the member of the public who uh, gave comment, uh. We already have in our code, uh, the ten thirty rule. And uh, uh, the ten thirty rule says that it takes two-thirds majority to hear a new item. Um, I can count on one hand the number of times we've invoked that rule, but we do have that rule. Um, you know, I'm not a big fan of uh, uh, amendment two. It's just better than that. It requires. Uh, eight members instead of six, so it's still a very high bar, but uh. I I I felt like if the council was predisposed to not. Uh, keep pushing when we're so close, then such a thing wouldn't be necessary, but I believe it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other final comments from council? Okay, seeing none, are we ready for the question? Amendment number two of ordinance twenty one dash thirty four. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scambler?
Yes.
Sims?
No.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith? Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Boland?
Yes.
And coming back to Smith, I did not hear you.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, amendment number two of ordinance twenty one dash thirty four, um, passes seven two zero. Hey, um, now that. Amendment number two has been adopted, that means number one can't be adopted and. Number three, as I understand it, the possibility would not need to be. Is that correct, Mr. Lucas and or a parliamentarian clarity?
As the sponsor of amendment three, I can confirm that's true. It's not needed.
Thank you very much. Um, and councilmember Boland, that also means. There'll be no need to introduce uh, your amendment number one, because it can't be adopted. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Um, now we will go to questions from council of the sponsor. On ordinance twenty one dash thirty four as amended. Okay, seeing none, we will go to the public. If there's any public comments on ordinance twenty one dash thirty four. Um, as amended, um. Again, identify yourself if you choose to speak and please uh, use the raised hand function in Zoom. Through the participants button, reactions button, or the more buttons, or if you're on a mobile device, star nine should get you there. Or you could send a note to the meeting host via the chat function on Zoom, um, if necessary. Mr. Lucas.
Not seen any public comment at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Um, we'll move on to final comment or and or questions if any, but final comments of council members. Uh, um. On ordinance twenty one dash thirty four as amended. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, I'd like to uh, thank councilmember Boland for um, drafting this legislation. Uh, I think it's um, it's a wise move to uh. To make it more likely that we will limit our time um. In deliberation uh, in council meetings, because I do feel strongly that uh, it. The quality of our decision-making uh declines as the evening wears on. Um, and it is also more fair to uh, city staff and to members of the public if we end. In a timely manner and uh, resume any uh, remaining deliberations uh, at another point in time. So I intend to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further final comment from council? Okay, I'm seeing none, then I will make a final comment. Um, I too want to thank you, councilman Boland, for the work. Um, that you did to craft uh, this piece of legislation. Um, I am opposed to it. I still do not see. Um, that this legislation is needed or necessary. Um, I don't see that it does anything that the council can do without this legislation. Um, we have different tools um, in order to end meetings. Um, and any council member, as I mentioned earlier, can uh, move to adjourn at any time. Again, it's it's been a lot of work that you put on there and that's much appreciated. Um, but as you said, since twenty fifteen. Um, it's averaged two a year, two meetings that have lasted um, over five and a half hours. Um, some of them little over uh, two, as I recall, substantially over. Um, but compared to per year on average, compared to the actual number of meetings that. This body does in a council calendar year, um, to me still speaks of being um, a bit unnecessary. Um, part of me, and again, this is the feeling that I really. For the events that I participated in on March the third, which wasn't the council meeting on uh, that night. that night, but I did check into it later on this evening. But I think this legislation, I mean, this is just me, and I'm not, I hope I don't mischaracterize. Part of this legislation is more of a response to that particular meeting that lasted that long. After that meeting, there was a council comment that, to me, bordered on almost character assassination of some of the colleagues and some of those discussions. And there was blame on one side or the other for not quote unquote meeting, ending the meeting. Whereas we do know there were a couple mechanisms and tools that could have ended that meeting a lot earlier if it was chosen by those in attendance or those present. So that's just my 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 response. I don't think it's necessary or needed, I think it takes away from the council's own nine member authority to move to adjourn or to continue as it seems fit. And and that's really all I have to say about that. Do we have any other final comments from other council members? Saying none, I'm quite sure Councilmember Volan would like to rebut, but I'm coming to be a council member. I just want to check with everyone else. I'm sure you won't have a rebuttal for this. Saying no more, Councilmember Volan. You're muted.
It's not a rebuttal. I simply would say that it doesn't matter what the topic is. I want to remind people that the ten thirty rule was passed in an era where council began at seven thirty. So the contemplated length of a typical regular session of council was three and a half hours. That by eleven or so, maybe eleven thirty, if you were pushing it, we'd be done. So five and a half hours shows just how much more work the council is now having to take into consideration, and how much more contentious some of the work we're having to do is. Under no circumstances, though, is there reason to be debating railings and planters at one in the morning or tax abatement set two in the morning. The ordinance that Councilman Chopra authored, pushing back the council meeting start time to six thirty, was debated at one twenty-four in the morning, after a full night of other busy things. Of more, let's let's say more momentous decisions. It was not a good time to decide it, I don't care how how sure individual members were of how they felt about it. And of course, we had a meeting that went till three thirty in the morning, which set an all time record by literally an hour and a half. And I just don't want to see that happen again. I would say that upon passage of this ordinance, the clerk and her staff will thank you. The public will thank you. The administration and staff will thank you, and again, paraphrasing George M. Cohen, I will thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments from council? Okay, I do not have a rebuttal, but I have talked to many of those folks that you mentioned that would thank you. And I just want to let you know that that is not the case, at least from what I'm getting. But that's my comments for that part. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, thank you. Since the March third meeting was invoked by you, Mr. President, I wanted to just remind everybody that the President Sims said that there were other methods that could have been used that evening. And actually, since the council was split four four on the issue, both the issue, the ordinance at hand and the issue of of ending or continuing, I actually don't see how the meeting could have been ended sooner. So just wanted to say that, and and with this legislation, it it could have been, thank you.
Oh, thank you. A great comment. And one of the things I'd ever said that those tools or decisions was desirable. Simply, it was four to four on different sides, simply if one side had a basically not been involved, then there would not have been a forum and the meeting would have stopped. Again, I'm not saying it's desirable, there's just other tools that not necessarily should be, in my mind, necessary for an ordinance such as this. And that's just one tool. And maybe, again, had the ninth person been there, then the outcome would have still been different. Okay, is there any other comments? And seeing no, I'm sorry, Councilmember Rallo?
Yeah, just to say that I'll I'll support this. I think a consequence of this will be that the legislation will still occur and ending meetings at a prescribed time will mean more meetings. So we should expect then to to have more meetings entail from a vote on in the affirmative on this. And I'm I'm prepared to to do that rather than than go excessively late. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo. Any other comments? From council? Seeing none, are we ready for a question? Okay, well, the clerk, please call the roll on ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-four as amended.
Councilmembers Scambleary?
Yes.
Sims?
No.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
No.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-four as amended is adopted seven two zero. Thank you all very, very much. Councilmember Flaherty, I believe we do have more legislation for second reading resolutions.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move the resolution twenty-one dash thirty-five be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you, it's been properly moved in second by the clerk. That ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-five be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Scambleary?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, that motion's been moved in second and is passed, will the clerk please read?
Resolution twenty-one dash thirty-five. Resolution proposing an ordinance modifying local income tax allocations in Monroe County and casting fifty-eight point two eight votes in favor of the ordinance regarding adjusting the allocations between the Public Safety Answering Point, PSAP, and general public safety purposes tax rates without changing other allocations or the total expenditure tax rate. The synopsis is resolution twenty-one dash thirty-five proposes an ordinance to the Monroe County Local Income Tax Council that would modify the allocation of tax revenues between two components of the local income tax expenditure tax rate. This reallocation will affect the Public Safety Answering Point, PSAP, and the general public safety, public safety, rates authorized under Indiana Code six dash three point six dash six dash eight without changing other components of the expenditure rate or the expenditure rate expenditure rate overall. With adoption of the ordinance, the tax rate for the PSAP would increase to zero point zero eight zero seven percent, representing three two point two eight five percent of the total, and the tax rate for public safety would decrease to zero point one six nine three percent, representing six seven point seven one five percent of the total. The reallocation follows the recommendation of the Public Safety Local Income Tax Committee of the County Local Income Tax Council and would go into effect on January first, twenty twenty-two.
Sorry, it was muted, thank you. Councilmember Flaherty?
I move the resolution twenty-one dash thirty-five be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. I do believe speaking is this evening's Mr. Lucas. Please proceed, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sims, yes, Stephen Lucas, council administrator slash attorney here tonight to present resolution twenty-one thirty-five to the council. As Chief Deputy Clerk, Sophia just read, resolution twenty-one thirty-five proposes that the Monroe County Local Income Tax Council adopt an ordinance adjusting the distribution of public safety local income tax revenue by increasing the portion of the public safety tax rate dedicated to the Public Safety Answering Point, which is also known as the dispatch center here in the county. The local income tax council here in Monroe County serves as the adopting body under state code. And members of that tax council include the fiscal bodies from the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, Ellisville, and Steinsville. In addition to the adjustments of the distribution amounts, this resolution would cast, in addition to proposing that adjustment, this resolution would cast cities approximately forty-eight, or excuse me, fifty-eight votes in favor of the ordinance contained within the resolution. Since twenty sixteen, the council has taken similar actions each year to adjust the distribution dedicated to the dispatch center to reflect the budget for the dispatch center recommended and agreed to by the policy board. And if I could display a table just briefly, it might help illustrate what adjustments we're talking about. You'll see here in the highlighted columns, the two components of the Public Safety Local Income Tax, which is currently set at point two five percent for the county. The top line here under public safety is the amount that gets distributed to the city of Bloomington, to Monroe County, to the town of Ellisville, and the town of Steinsville through certified distributions. The second row here, it's labeled PSAP, is an amount that gets taken off of the top of that of the revenue generated by the point two five percent and gets distributed first to the Public Safety Answering Point. Tonight's action would not increase the total public safety tax rate, which, as I just mentioned, is set at point two five percent. And as was mentioned in the synopsis, this comes forward at the recommendation of the Public Safety Local Income Tax Committee, which typically meets over the summer months and includes four city council members, two county council members, one member of the Ellisville Town Council, and one member of the Steinsville Town Council as an ex as a non-voting member. Again, that committee typically meets over the summer months, and one of its primary responsibilities is to review any applications received from qualifying service providers that under state law are entitled to apply for a portion of the Public Safety Local Income Tax. And I will just note that there were no applications for funding filed this year by any qualifying service providers. The committee in August recommended seven zero that the tax council adopt the proposed dispatch budget and associated distribution amounts. And this resolution here tonight would carry out that recommendation. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lucas. And I may have misspoke earlier and called this an ordinance as opposed to a resolution, and if I did, I'll correct it now. Resolution twenty-one dash thirty-five. Now, do we going to council, do you have any questions of Mr. Lucas, Councilmember Rallo?
Well, actually, my questions were going to be directed to the members of the committee in terms of, could they describe the the need that's being addressed here in in raising the PSAP?
If you want, I can reply to that to the best of my recollection.
Yes, I'll go ahead, Councilmembers.
Go ahead. If I if I remember to the best of my recollection, Mr. Rallo, that there was additional staff to bring it it up to the dispatch up to full speed. And so that's why that was, it was increased, and that's why the number was changed and modified. Do I remember, recall that correctly, Mr. Lucas?
Yes, the the largest bulk of the increase requested out of the PS Lit was in category one, where I think a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase roughly was proposed.
Most of it due to personnel.
Yes, thank you, Councilman Smith, and if I can respond as well, being a member of PS Lit committee. I think it's important, I think most of us know that the main purpose of PS Lit is to fund dispatch or PSAP and E nine one one, and that's the main function of that, then whatever is left is distributed by statute on certified shares. I think that's the correct term, certified shares, and then that's how where we ended up where we are. I also recall, and I know this isn't exact, but I think the dispatch was short maybe like nine staff members? Or nine positions, actually, they were short positions, they requested a few more, so I think nine total was what dispatch was short. And what they're hoping to fund, if if I'm not miss misspeaking. Is there any other committee members who'd like to speak?
Yeah, it was it was that it was a fair amount of staff that they were short, that they needed to fulfill, to bring it up to standard, so.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, thank you, Councilmember Rallo. Do we have any other questions? Mr. Lucas? Okay, seeing none, we'll now go to the public for any public comment on resolution twenty-one dash thirty-five. Do we have any takers? Okay, yes, we do, I've seen one, and before we get started, I will remind folks once again to indicate your desire to speak by using the raised hand function in Zoom, using the participants button, reactions button, or the more buttons. If you have a mobile device or a mobile phone, star nine should get you here. In the in the event that now those work, you can send a note to the meeting host via the chat function on Zoom. And I will remind speakers, public commenters, I have three minutes.
Yes, first up is Jeff McKim.
Yes, can you hear me?
I sure can, Councilmember, or I'm sorry, Councilmember McKim.
Thank you.
Identify yourself and proceed, please.
Jeff McKim, a member of the Monroe County Council and also the the PS Lit Committee, and I just wanted to speak in support of the this change in the PSAP Lit rate. It is appropriate to fund, i- it is the rate that is appropriate to fund the budget that has been that is being discussed for and has preliminarily been approved by the Monroe County Council, although not finally adopted for the Dispatch Center. We certainly support the increases in personnel necessary to bring the the Dispatch Center up to up to standards. I certainly support those increases and like I said, the the increased rate is exactly what is appropriate to fund that budget. I do think that there are there are some work that the city and county need to do together to be able to really make sure we take advantage of the reversions, that is, the unspent appropriations at the end of each budget year, and there have been substantial reversions at the end of each budget year that are by the interlocal agreement between the county and the city for the Dispatch Center are earmarked for capital expenditures. We need to work together on a capital expenditure plan and also a method that we can use those funds to be able to substitute for capital expenditures in subsequent budget years and perhaps reduce the PSAP rate just a little bit, even though capital is a very minor part of the 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 current budget. I think in future years, we can we can use those reversions to be able to reduce that rate a little bit, but for this year, this this rate is appropriate. this, this rate is appropriate, and I encourage you to vote yes.
Thank you for your comments. I want to call you Councilmember, Councilman McKim. Mr. Lucas, do we have any other public comments?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay, thank you. Seeing none, we'll go back to council on any final comments on Resolution 21-35. Okay, seeing none. We ready for the question? Will the clerk please call the roll Resolution 2135?
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Bolan?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Scambalary?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Resolution 21-35 is adopted nine zero. Thank you very, very much. Moving on down into the agenda, we're now, we have legislation for first readings. Councilmember Flaherty?
Mr. President, I'd like to move that ordinance 21-40 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved in second, that ordinance 21-40 being read or introduced and read by the clerk entitled, but, but, read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Bolan?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Scambalary?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And the motion passes down. Oh, will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 21-40, to amend Title VI Health and Sanitation of the Bloomington Municipal Code regarding removal of sanitation fee expiration provision effective November 1st, 2020, contained in subsection 6.04.090, parentheses 7, of the Bloomington Municipal Code. The synopsis is, ordinance 21-40 eliminates subsection 6.04.090, parentheses 7, of the Bloomington Municipal Code, which had set an expiration date of November 1st, 2020, for Bloomington sanitation fees. Ordinance 21-40 does not alter existing sanitation rates, but instead ratifies the billing and collection of service fees from November 1st, 2020, and authorizes the city to continue providing sanitation services at the rates contained in subsection 6.04.090, parentheses 1, and parentheses 2.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to move that the council consider adoption of ordinance 21-40 in the same meeting on the same night that it's introduced.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved in second. Will the clerk please call the roll? So proper, Councilmember Flaherty, thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Bolan?
Yeah.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Scambalary?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that, a motion to adopt in the same meeting, unanimous, and passes nine zero. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, since that passed, I'd like to go ahead and move that we adopt ordinance 21-40.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved in second. And before I move forward, I want to be clear. Okay, no, okay, I was looking at passage. I'm sorry. You're absolutely correct. I do believe that Mr. Basin is here this evening. To, I'm sorry, Mr. Allen. And Mr. Allen, before you two get started, one of the things that I would like to share with our own council, there is, and I'm sure you will explain the urgency and the need for this this evening. And there could be, based on this legislation, some other questions that could be generated by council. What we're here to do tonight is to deal with the sanitation fee expiration provision. And if there's other questions that could be generated, the counseling leadership have identified as October 20th as another time to entertain those questions. And we will also receive a report from the Director of Public Works on August 20th. That should have probably been given in November of 2020. I hope that was clear and not confusing. So, Mr. Allen, if you're ready.
Yeah, I mean, this is pretty, pretty short and sweet. This ordinance essentially does the two things that you, you heard, which is first, it ratifies the actions of the continued collection of sanitation fees as found in Bloomington Municipal Code 6.04.090. And then secondly, it eliminates the sunset provision that was contained in that subsection of the ordinance, subsection seven. Just a little bit of background, this common council passed ordinance 1706 in 2017. An amendment was added to that ordinance, which set an expiration date for the fees under that, that section of municipal code for November 1st, 2020. The city continued to collect fees past November 2020. We realized that there is a provision of Indiana Code, just so you're all aware, it's Indiana Code 361416, which permits common councils to ratify any action of the unit, if, if that action could have been approved beforehand. And so under that, we're asking you to ratify the continued collection of the fees and to eliminate the sunset provision in the ordinance. And that's, that's as simple as it can get for, for what this particular ordinance does. And Adam Wasen and I are here to answer any questions you may have pursuant to President Sims' outline of, of the plan going forward.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Moving to council for any questions on ordinance 21-40. Okay, seeing none, we will go to the public. If there's any public comments on ordinance 21-40. Again, I will ask those that may be interested in public speaking, that once you've been acknowledged, please identify yourself. But you can indicate your desire to speak by using the raised hand function in Zoom, by either utilizing the participants button, reactions button, or the more buttons. If you own a mobile device, star nine should reach us, or you can send a note to the meeting host via the chat function on Zoom. Also, public commenters will have three minutes to speak if they desire to speak. Mr. Lewis, do we have, or Mr. Lucas, do we have any takers?
Not that I see, no.
Thank you. We will go back to council for any final comments on ordinance 21-40. Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. Just a few thoughts that, in, in reviewing this, this ordinance, which I will be supporting, I read the minutes from the meeting from 2017, when ordinance 1706 was passed, and they were, they were quite interesting. The amendment number two that included this sunset provision was brought by Councilmember Bolan. And the discussion surrounding that was speaking about a handful of things that we've been talking about again just recently, including the idea of pay as you throw or rebating customers who, who do not, who only attract, collected once a month, for instance. The idea then was to analyze and collect data to make it, make an informed assessment about how to create a system where we can incentivize waste production. So that was being contemplated at that time. It was part of the discussion. In fact, the idea was to collect data for a year, but I think sanitation services said they needed more time, so it was extended to this 20 20 sunset date, which I think was meant to have us revisit this question. So we are revising it in, in budget discussions and otherwise. And we do have some data that demonstrate that there are quite a few residents who, who only put out their collection, bins for collection once or twice a month, and that such a system, despite having some maybe technological and logistical hurdles, might be worth pursuing. So I appreciate that we've come back full circle on that discussion that was anticipated at the time. Two other things struck me in those minutes. One was a discussion of ADA accessibility concerns. And I mentioned that it was the top priority, but I'll just note that we have some pretty serious issues with that, actually, with, with trash recycling bins obstructing sidewalks all over the city. I see it constantly. And I'm not exactly sure what's to be done about that, but I wanted to acknowledge that it's, it's a real challenge. And just, I don't know, folks need to have a designated place at each household for where their bin goes, or if we need to be serious about enforcing that in some way. If the bins were in the middle of the street, it would never fly. But it's because they're on the sidewalk that, you know, we're aware it's a problem, but we kind of tolerate it. So I just wanted to point out that injustice and inequity. Finally, a comment from Councilmember Granger struck me, which was about the idea of revisiting this data, perhaps going with the pay as you throw system or something different out of a desire to reduce the general fund supplement that sort of cross subsidizes, if you will, sanitation services. We, we allocate about a one and a half million dollars from the general fund to sanitation collection services because the rabid vintages don't cover costs. I've spoken about this before, how I live in a condo, I pay for my trash service. Part of my tax dollars also pay for your trash service if you live in a four-unit home or less. And, and I think that too is sort of fundamentally inequitable and something we should move away from. So it's interesting, again, to see it cited there as part of the motivation for this sunset clause that we're now getting rid of as, as a motivation to revisit the data and, and revisit the rate structure and all those things. So I just thought it was really interesting to read, read that discussion. Again, I'll be supporting the ordinance, but I, I do think the issues that motivated this sunset clause on the rates being valid to begin with is, is a, a still a warranted policy conversation we need to be having. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty. Any other final comments from council members? Councilmember Bolan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I didn't recall that I was the author of that amendment, but you know, I think what we didn't contemplate in 2017 was something that we contemplated a, a year later when it came to parking, when we realized that we hadn't raised rates for a while. This has been a recurring theme of council over the past generation or so. The same thing happened with parking garages, the Walnut and Morton garages, again, were approved in 2001, 2003 on the condition that council revisit rates every two to three years. It's pretty clear that when council says we should revisit rates in three years, it doesn't usually happen. And the, the better solution, the one that we started doing in 2018, is to create, I mean, we, we revisit rates because of inflation. It's better to build in inflation or an anticipation of how much rates will go up in the ordinance that passes the rates. So for example, ordinance 1811, which changed some significant parking policy, set new rates for permits that had different prices for the next 10 years. And I think that one of the things that we'll eventually discuss, which I hope is going to be soon, actually, is when we change rates, it's not like we have to go before the IURC or anything. So the next set of rates really should reflect escalating costs, anticipating, you know, by some percentage a year. That rate should go up, but, you know, perhaps progressive rates are possible in sanitation. Maybe the rates for the largest bin go up higher than the rates for the smallest bin. Maybe we do pay as you throw. These are all things that should be debated. I would like to see some committee work on it. The Community Affairs Committee has oversight over sanitation. That's currently listed as myself, Councilmember Sandberg, Councilmember Scambalary, Councilmember Rallo. But however we choose to consider it, I know that it's not something that really can wait, either from our perspective or from public works' perspective. So I'm happy to support this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bolan. Any other comments from council members? Okay, thank you. I would like to remind you that Director of Public Works, Adam Wasen, is scheduled to give a report on October the 20th meeting, and probably close to the one that would have been given in November 2020, but with some updates and some additions. So a lot of the other questions and comments that I anticipate can be addressed at that time or begin to be addressed. I would also remember or remind everyone that two-thirds vote will be required for this to be passed, since we're doing it in the same night. Okay, do we have any other final comments? Seeing none, are we ready for the question? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Bolan?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scambalary?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance 2140 passes nine zero, which exceeds the two-thirds vote required for patches threshold. And that is adopted. Thank you all very, very much. Thank you, Mr. Allen. Thank you, Mr. Wasen. I guess we'll see you all in a couple of weeks. Councilmember Flaherty, I do believe we have another piece of legislation for first reading. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, I'd like to move that ordinance 21-35 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. And properly moved in second. That ordinance 21-35 be introduced, read by the clerk entitled, by synopsis, by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Bolan?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scambalary?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Thank you. And ordinance 3125 has been moved improperly seconded. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 21-35, to amend the City of Bloomington zoning maps by rezoning 1.31 acres of property from mixed-use employment ME to mixed-use medium scale MM regarding 135201215 Southwest Plex Avenue, Wheeler Mission Petitioner. The synopsis is, ordinance 21-35 rezones 1.31 acres from mixed-use employment ME to mixed-use medium scale MM.
Okay, thank you very much. We will now move on through the agenda to additional public comment. I'm sorry, Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, Mr. President, I believe we'll need to make a referral of that piece of legislation first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just assumed. Sorry, on the calendar. I would like to refer ordinance 21-35 to the committee of the whole. And I will remind everyone in our public that that committee meeting will begin immediately or whatever time we decide if there's a break after this regular session meeting. Thank you. Okay, we'll now move to additional public comment. Mr. Lucas, do you see, we have any takers?
Yes, I see one taker. And for anyone else out there that would like to, to speak, please use the raised hand function by clicking on the reactions tab in, in your control bar. For some folks, it may either be under the participants tab or the more button. And if you're not able to find the race hand feature, please just type a message into chat that you'd like to comment, and we will recognize you. And I do see two hands.
And I do see two hands raised at the moment. And first is Mary's iPad.
Hello?
Hello, how are you?
I'm well, thank you. I'm Mary Sutherland. And I have a piece of property at 16 Note. It's a State Farm office, and I also take care of the building and the surrounding area. First, I'd like to applaud Dana Jones for doing a fabulous job cleaning up the whole area.
Sorry.
Yeah, thank you. No, I just, thank you, Councilmember Flaherty. Public comments at this time is for items that are not on the agenda, and this is on the agenda. I will remind you that when we reconvene in the committee of the whole, there will be time for public comment, I do believe, on this ordinance immediately after we adjourn this one, or fairly immediately after.
Sorry, first time.
No, oh, no, 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 you're fine. Thank you. I appreciate it. I hope you hang around. I'd like to hear from you. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
It looks like the other folks that wanted to speak might have wanted to comment on this item as well. I don't see any hands raised now.
Okay, thank you. And seeing none, we will now deal with matters of council schedule.
Yes, thank you. The council has a scheduled work session this Friday, which would have been an opportunity to hear previews of items coming up during the next legislative cycle. At the moment, the council doesn't have any items scheduled for first reading during the next cycle. So the council, they want to consider a motion to cancel this Friday's work session.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Flaherty.
Move we cancel the work session scheduled for Friday, October 8.
Second.
Thank you. It's been Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, I I guess I'm curious why we have no items for first reading. I know of one piece of legislation that is actually ready. I hadn't followed up with you, President Sims, because I thought there was, you know, that our schedule was too busy, but now I'm surprised to hear that there is no legislation for first reading for next round.
Well, I'm looking on the schedule now. I'm not so sure what you're referring to.
The pet shop ordinance.
Actually, well, we talked, well, it's my understanding that wasn't ready when we were considering it, and that was in the in the process of getting ready, and we did want to schedule it, but, Mr. Lucas, correct me if I'm wrong.
There are several items scheduled, planned to be introduced for November the 3rd. There were some ordinances that the administration had been preparing that had been planned for October the 20th, and just recently those were the administration indicated that they'd need more time. So that's, that's the reason there's nothing currently scheduled for October the 20th for first reading.
Okay, thank you.
And I will ask you the question, where are we sitting on the head ordinance that we talked about before? I thought there was still a little bit more work left.
It's good.
It's good? Okay, well, I'm not so sure council leadership was aware of that. So go ahead, Mr. Lucas.
I think staff would would appreciate the time to prepare it for the November 3rd cycle.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith. I apologize. I wasn't, I thought we were still working on it a little bit. And some things called annexation and budget kind of gets in the way a little bit, but we'll, we'll get there. Thank you. I'm looking forward to to addressing or addressing that piece, actually. Mr. Lucas, well, do we have a motion to cancel? And it's been moved in second. Can we cancel that if there's no objections, or do we call the roll? I'm asking, I'm asking the staff or parliamentarian.
If you wanted to do so by unanimous consent, you could, you could simply confirm that there are no objections and.
Thank you. Do we have any objections at counseling work session on Friday? Okay, thank you all very much.
Just.
Yes.
Just a procedural, Mr. President, you're free to do that without a motion pending first. Also, you can just move forward in that way on on things that are minimal in nature and seem like they probably have unanimous consent.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that. I still will refer to you or Mr. Lucas. And maybe our previous poll. But, okay, we're dealt with council schedule. And having no more business, if there's no objections, we will adjourn this regular session and commence in who's the chair, Councilmember Smith?
Yes, yes, sir.
Do you, do you like a little break there?
Councilmembers, would you like a minute or two break before we launch into the council, the whole? Okay. It looks like, it looks like some heads are shaking, yes. So let's reconvene in two minutes. Is that okay?
Make it three, make it three.
Okay, three minutes. We'll, we'll return at 8:51 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Thanks, everyone, and members of the public. We hope to see you in a little more than three minutes. Thank you.